He just popped up on my screen. I'm like, oh, Tony.
Yeah, I didn't realize I closed my window. Dr. Anderson or is it Ms. Pakarski? Are you reconvening us or did you want me to do that?
Go ahead. You've got the full meeting.
Great, thank you. Do we need to go ahead and do roll then since we were away or?
Yes, that would be best just to be sure that everybody's returned.
I'm going to go right down the list of participants on our screen then. Ms. Omeish. So make sure you back up. Mrs. Tolan. Morning, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Good morning.
Morning, Ms. Keys-Gomorrah.
Good morning.
And Mr. Fresh, we said hello.
Hello.
Ms. Cohen.
Good morning, Ms. Maren.
Good morning, Ms. McLaughlin.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Sizemorehizer. Sizemorehizer, you're back with us? Okay, we'll come back and Dr. Anderson, we said good morning. Ms. Pakarski.
I'm here.
Hello, and Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, so Ms. Omeish and.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry about that.
Good morning. Okay, so we'll assume that Ms. Sizemorehizer will join us shortly. Okay, um, I'm going to get a warm going off. Okay, so this morning, we're going to, and into the beginning of the afternoon, we're going to turn our attention to the budget. And we're going to be doing two things. The first is the fiscal forecast, which will be a little bit more time from 11 to 12:30, and then the budget review, the program budget review from 1 to 1:30, and then we'll take a break. So let me just at this time introduce the first portion of our work, which is the fiscal forecast for this coming year. So today, staff is going to provide a preliminary fiscal forecast for the fiscal year 22 budget with revenue and expenditure projections. So there's no decision making required and it's just for information only. So this year's forecast is unusual because of course, there's still so much uncertainty about the future with the COVID pandemic. So it's difficult to provide firm numbers this far in advance even in a normal year. So please keep in mind it's very preliminary. So the school board gets this first look at the FCPS preliminary estimates, but the forecast is ultimately prepared in conjunction with the county's fiscal forecast. And you might recall that we have a joint meeting between the school board and the Board of Supervisors about budget development, which is conducted annually. And this is when staff will provide their best early estimates for the upcoming year, FY '22. So this is an opportunity at that time for elected officials to discuss the budget together. So that joint meeting is scheduled for November 24th from 1:30 to 3:30. The location right now is being identified on the county calendar as the county government center, but we don't yet have all the details about a virtual option. So the content from today's presentation will then be merged with the county's preliminary information just prior to that joint budget meeting. So I will turn it over to Ms. Burden now to present this fiscal forecast. Thank you, Ms. Burden, all of this work.
Ms. Burden, this is Dr. Braybrand. Are you there?
I'm here. I'm just turning on my camera and my mic, which for some reason took a little bit of time.
Good morning. Thank you. Your team is doing a terrific job, as Ms. Maren said, and board members, this is a very challenging year for Ms. Burden and her staff. They're bringing you a very conservative fiscal forecast, lots of challenges, but we're going to try to do everything we can to continue to keep you updated and to work collaboratively with the county and ultimately with the State General Assembly to maximize the amount of revenues that we can get to support our students and schools while keeping a very close eye on our expenses and our savings where possible. So Ms. Burden, you want to go ahead and share your presentation? And you've done an outstanding job.
Thank you so much. If you could go ahead and move to the next slide. There's been some discussion that there should be some consistency in the PowerPoint presentation that staff brings to the school board, and to that end, we've begun transitioning to that by including some common elements like background info, rationale, decisions needed, and an executive summary. So first, the background. As Ms. Maren said, the FCPS preliminary fiscal forecast is prepared in conjunction with the county fiscal forecast for discussion at the Joint School Board, Board of Supervisors meeting on November 24th. It's an annual occurrence, and this is the first look at early estimates for the upcoming year. This PowerPoint document will be merged with the county's preliminary information just prior to the joint meeting. Can you move to the next slide? The rationale, the Virginia Code mandates that it's the duty of the superintendent to prepare a budget with the estimate of the amount of money deemed to be needed to support the school division, and that's commonly referred to as a needs-based budget, and that's Virginia Code Section 22 dot 1 dash 92. But it has to be noted that these numbers reflect preliminary broad estimates and are to illustrate potential revenue and expenditures only, and they shouldn't be interpreted as a recommended change to the budget. You know, we're still in the very early stages of developing the budget. There are still a lot of decisions and uncertainty out there, and so, you know, this is just, again, very, very early estimates. Next chart. We, this, this chart, we always include a chart with FCPS general information in the merged schools-county document, so that's why it's included here as well. This is actually the same chart from the superintendent's opening of school annual report that he does mid-September every year. So it just shows general information about the number of schools, students, employees, demographics, and some highlights. So I'm not going to go over that because you've already seen it, but we do include it in the merged PowerPoint with the county. Next slide. And as far as our executive summary, based on our best early projection, we are expecting a decrease of 15.7 million in available revenue and an increase of 14.2 million in expenditures for a total projected gap of 29.9 million. And again, there is much uncertainty and so much that is unknown right now, and so you can see that this is a preliminary estimate, and it's also a bare bones estimate as to what we think might be needed. Next slide. This first slide shows the revenue projections. As far as the beginning balance goes, we're showing a reduction of 10 million as part of the fiscal 20 final budget review. Available funding of 24.4 million was set aside as a beginning balance for fiscal '22, which was the same level as fiscal '21. Now we know that we will need about 10 million of that to support the food service fund, which reduces the beginning balance by that amount. The county transfer makes up about 70% of our budget. We've assumed a level transfer, transfer or a flat transfer compared to '21 because we have no basis upon which to project an increase, nor do we have a basis to project a decrease. The county usually doesn't have their initial early revenue projections ready at this point in time. They should have some information available closer to the time of the joint meeting, and that will be incorporated into our document. But for now, we don't, we don't have any, any information about any increases or decreases, and so we are recommending a flat transfer for this budget as our early estimate. As far as state revenue goes, the same things. The governor doesn't introduce his budget in late December, and we have no basis upon which to project a state increase or decrease. So we're leaving that flat. Although sales tax revenues are holding up better than expected, we do want to, you know, continue to monitor that as the economic recovery depends on the status of the pandemic. As far as federal revenue goes, we had one time federal cares funding in the 2021 budget, and that's eliminated in the fiscal '22 budget. So the revenue and the expenditures both net to zero. And Fairfax City, we're expecting a 0.9 million increase. Their, their bill is based on air operational increases, and that's our estimate at this time. And then other revenue and textbook reserve are expected to decrease by 6.6 million compared to '21 because of the move to the textbook funds into the operating fund. So if we could move on to the next slide. And, you know, I can't, I can't say enough about the state and federal uncertainty. You may recall that back in mid-August, Governor Northam convened a special session of the General Assembly primarily to adjust the '21-'22 biennial budget to reflect the revenue forecasts necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. He introduced an amended budget, which included an updated revenue forecast, which originally included a statewide sales tax reduction of about 95 million, of which 20 million was FCPS. But since then, they've found other revenues to cover that, and so we are not expected to seize that, to see that sales tax reduction in fiscal '21. But they are monitoring, you know, sales tax just as closely as we are, and so we don't know yet what, what assumptions will be made for fiscal '22. The General Assembly is also continuing to look at enrollment, as is the Governor's Office and VDOE. Right now, there has been a deferral of using the September 30 enrollment projections, and they will take, take a look at that again in March. And so that would essentially, it prevents school divisions from receiving any reductions in state payments based on September 30. But after March, we could, we could see some reductions if March is indeed used. But there's a movement afoot, I believe, to hold localities harmless for the entire year with the belief that the statewide enrollment reduction is temporary, and once schools get back up and running, those students will, will return. As far, also, the governor may include a salary increase in his December introduced, introduced budget for K-12 if sufficient revenue is projected, and that's a big if. But you probably recall from other budget years or last year that when the state funds a compensation increase, only a very, very small portion of that falls on their side of the ledger instead of ours. So that is something also that is uncertain at this time. And then federal revenue, we have no information about any additional stimulus funds currently. Next slide. And then we have the expenditure projections. We do, even though we are, we are using the enrollment numbers from last September for this very, very early estimate, we do have some student needs that would fall under enrollment growth. We have had to add some additional preschool, special ed classrooms that opened up after the budget was adopted, and increases in preschool, special education classrooms are expected to continue in fiscal '22. So that's been calculated at about 3.5 million. Employee benefits are items that, you know, we will, we will have to increase. The ERFC contribution rate is increasing slightly at a cost of about 4 million. The FCERS contribution rate is projected to increase, resulting in additional costs of about a million. And of course, air healthcare, those costs still continue to rise, and that's the remainder for a total of 19.3 million in employee benefits increases. We also are, as always, are seeing base savings, and that's the recurring savings due to position turnover in the previous year, and that's been calculated at a negative 21.3 million. So that pulls your expenditures down a good bit. We have our FCPS ON initiative. We need to maintain those lease obligations for the high schools, middle schools, and the partial fifth and sixth grade in elementary schools. That is an increase of 6.3 million. We know that collective bargaining is on the horizon. This is a very, very small amount, just to acknowledge that there will be resource needs to address collective bargaining. We are planning on working with the county on their infrastructure that is needed. I think VSBA is making recommendations, but for now, this is just a very small placeholder in acknowledgement that some staffing will be needed that will be working full-time on collective bargaining. The contractual increase represents cost escalation increases in utilities, maintenance and license increases for major IT projects, building leases, those sorts of things, and that's calculated at 5.6 million. And then we have a small transfer to construction equipment of 0.2 million, and that's just based on the timing of your capital improvement projects. Next slide. We do have some other needs that are not included because, again, this is a bare bones budget. We do have, you know, great needs for English learners, and some, some initiatives have been brought forward to increase that English, English learner staffing, and that's about 50 positions at 5 million. T-spec staffing, due to the tremendous increase in both the number of devices and reliance on technology, it's been recommended that an increase in T-spec elementary staffing be made with a change to the formula. Instead of just a one, a T-spec for schools with enrollment over 750, which was what was approved in the current year's budget, we dropped that to a 1.0 T-spec for over 600 students. That would provide an additional 25 positions at 51 schools, and so that cost is reflected here as well. CIS scale enhancement, again, this is a bare bones budget, and so we did not include any compensation increases whatsoever, and the CIS scale enhancement is also on the table as far as the third year of that phase in at 2.8 million. These are other needs that we have, and, but they have not been included in this bare bones budget. And then finally, of course, the state compensation increase is still on our radar because any, any move to provide a salary increase by the state would have millions of dollars of effects on the Fairfax budget. Typically, we get about 15% from the state. So, for example, if they said they were proposing a 1% increase, that would cost us $25 million, of which we would get about 3.7 million from the state to help us with that. So that is something that we're, we're, we're not sure about right now. We don't know what the state is going to do, but if any sort of compensation increase is included, the burden of that would fall mainly on FCPS or air staff. And, you know, of course, we still will have the special education review recommendations. I know that they are planning on reviewing staffing standards for special education. There could be resource needs that come out of that study. And then summer school expansion to address instructional needs is also something that has kind of risen to the, risen to the top as a, as another need that, that might be, that we might want to address in fiscal '22. Next slide. So again, here's the summary. Our revenue projection is negative 15.7 million. Our bare bones expenditure projection is 14.2 million. So right now, we're looking at a gap of 29.9 million. Next slide. You know, there are many fiscal challenges ahead. The economic recovery depends on the end of the pandemic, pandemic, and, you know, I'd like to be optimistic, but I'm not. So, you know, we're being very cautious and very conservative, and this will definitely be a fiscal challenge for FCPS in developing our fiscal '22 budget. We do have additional needs related to COVID-19 with PPE, technology, and K-12 reopening, and any additional federal stimulus funds, plans are unclear at this point. And then, of course, state revenue, which I talked about at length. Next slide. We do have a budget question process. If you, if you have a budget question, be sure and send it to us and indicate, basically just send it to me an email with a CC to Marty Smith, Chief Operating Officer and Budget Director Alice Wiggington, and, you know, identify your priority of one, two, or three, if it's needed quickly. And again, just, just for the record, each question is tracked individually. Once the budget questions are received, we assign it to the appropriate leadership team member, but depending on the complexity of the question and the, the amount of research that has to go into the answer, they basically do not come back in the order that they are asked. So please be patient with your budget questions because you should know that we are trying to get those completed as quickly as possible. And next slide. This is the budget development calendar, and we just included this for your convenience. It basically identifies the major budget development events that are happening November through April. Next slide. And then the next thing on our agenda is the Joint Board of Supervisors School Board meeting on November the 24th, where this information will be merged with the county's information and provided to both bodies at the same time, and it's for information only. No action is required. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Burden, for all of that information in very unclear times. So now we have time for questions, and I just want to posit to my colleagues. I know we often use this time to ask questions of staff, and by all means, please do, but this could also be seen as an opportunity to share thoughts with one another in preparation for that joint meeting. You know, are there certain things that we might want to put in the forefront to the Board of Supervisors or know more about in preparation for that meeting? So just, just an idea here because this information is so straightforward that maybe that could just be another use for the time. So with that, if anyone has a question, I'm happy to, you have more? Let's see anyone just yet. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you, and thank you for the very thorough and sobering budget update. I think we all can agree that next year is going to be a challenging time, and your update goes hand in hand with the importance of us taking a fresh look at the, at the fine item budget and the operational expectations so that we can be as effective as possible. I would urge my colleagues that the schedule of this joint meeting on the budget is not well timed, and I would ask that, given that it is two days before Thanksgiving, that we ask for flexibility in doing that budget meeting, providing opportunities for people to participate virtually.
Thank you. I'm sure we can relay that, Ms. Burden, right? To any staff? Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Dr. Braybrand and I have weekly meetings with County Executive and with Joe Mandoro, and so we can share your concerns at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Sizemorehizer?
Yeah, just, just briefly, and I'm looking forward to maybe talking to Ms. Burden more and Mr. Smith about this, but I kind of think when we talk to the Board of Supervisors, we need to sort of bucket the budget needs in three ways. Sort of COVID short-term needs, the next, you know, year or so, the COVID long-term needs, which to me are the remediation needs and social emotional needs that will have, that our students will be facing and our staff will be facing, staff shortages in the long term that I think our Board of Supervisors should think about, or be important to talk to them about. We may have gaps that will take more work to close because of COVID. We may have more social emotional needs that may lead to behavioral issues that will take additional staff. So I just think that's an important thing to put out, that we bucketed in COVID, not just short-term and through a PPE and school reopening, but long-term COVID needs. In the last pieces, I think it's also important to bucket out ongoing needs for ongoing initiatives such as, for example, the phased approach to English learner staffing that have been our efforts to close some of these gaps and achieve equity and access for our students and, you know, that needs-based staffing, closing some of the funding gaps in our schools through the fees. So I think, I personally think it'd be helpful to bucket those out, so it's not just COVID, you know, short-term, long-term, as well as ongoing equity needs, and then potentially a And then potentially a fourth bucket of new thoughts, lessons learned from COVID, right? Technology access, right? Homework gap. I think that, you know, that might be helpful too. So those are, these are really just my very initial thoughts as I'm looking at this and review the presentation, but I'd love to hear more and talk more about that. But I think breaking it into these buckets might be helpful and have that conversation, especially in what looks like could be a tough, you know, fiscal forecast going forward, both the state, federal. And then the other question is, I'm sure you'll bring this forward, is the effect on enrollment. You know, I know you talked about using last year's enrollment numbers, but I don't know what effect that'll have in our budget presentations or budget forecasting in terms of if our enrollment is down this year or maybe down next year. I don't know. But I just wanted to put those two things out there as my initial thoughts. So nothing really need to respond to, although I always welcome your thoughts. I just wanted to, my ideas for you to think about as we move forward, especially with meeting with the Board of Supervisors. So thank you. Thank you, by the way, Ms. Burden. I know how busy you are, so I really appreciate your work on this and the very succinct but detailed presentation. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. Ms. McLaughlin?
I guess, thank you. Ms. Burden, I really do appreciate that you are presenting to us a very cautious budget. I would like for the public and Dr. Brabran to remember that this board was concerned about this very issue back in March and April, when we were talking about what were we going to do about all of our staffing, including hourly and temporary workers. And the mantra back then in the spring was, well, it's already been budgeted, we'll be okay. And we were talking about tens of millions of dollars. Now here we are, just, you know, six months later, and there's this mindfulness now that tens of millions of dollars are, are very serious and that we're probably looking at really shortfalls that absolutely should and needed to be anticipated. So I, I say that just because some of us who have been considered what they call budget hawks have been really, I feel, gotten pushed back at times from, from the administration. And so my point of all of this is that we, as a board, want to partner with our superintendent and his team. We want to be a valuable board and a valuable voice. And I'm hopeful that as we go through this much larger program budget review, that there is that sort of shared partnership in mindset that we're not here to make staff workload heavier, but I do hope that our collective voices of 12 do end up actually being viewed as valued by the superintendent and his team. And I would like to know where we stand then in terms of our cafeteria workers. As was presented in August, it costs about $3.5 million per month. And I've not heard an update since August, specifically in terms of how we were going to be drawing off of the FY '22 beginning balance to cover what was anticipated, potentially $17.5 million as we continue to remain closed. So Ms. Burden, if you could, I know you've talked about the, the federal government effort to feed 100% of students and help us get, you know, more reimbursements, but where do we stand in terms of your projections for our cafeteria workers and the deficit spending that we have or that we're having to potentially prepare for? That would be very helpful to start.
Yeah, Ms. McLaughlin, thank you. I do want to say before Ms. Burden responds, we absolutely want to continue to be partners with the board and take your feedback. And we appreciate your, your fiscal eye and your feedback to us about, about the pandemic and the impacts it's had. Ms. Burden will share again that she put in the budget presentation you just saw about 10 million around food and nutrition supports. Two things have happened that I just want to bring your attention and to the board and community. One, the summer feeds program from the U.S. Department of Agriculture was extended for the entire school year. That is a shot in the arm for every food and nutrition operation across America because it gives us more flexibility in how we deliver the meals and capture the revenue. The second thing I want to share and brag on Mrs. Burden and on Maria Peron, we have gotten meals up from 15,000 or 20,000 this summer, and this burden can give you the latest number, I think we're at 70,000 meals a day, which is getting us even closer to being break even for running our food and nutrition operation. So through our hardworking efforts of our team, we're getting in a much better position to manage this food and nutrition revenue issue. So Ms. Burden, would you like to add and amplify anything I've shared there?
Sure. Dr. Brabran is absolutely right. Air numbers are way up and we continue to expand weekly. Right now, you know, we have 38 production sites. Normally we only have, you know, a handful of central kitchens. We have 50 grab and go sites, 25 meal kit sites, 80 bus routes, 17 buses that are transporting snack and supper meals from production to the grab and go sites, 37 SRS sites, and basically 188 schools and centers requesting meal service. So we have, we continue to ramp that up. We have ramped that up. Back in August, we were seeing about 15,000 meals on average per day. Now that number is 70,000. And that's why the, you know, we, I think our original estimate for food services was about 27 million. And that number has now been reduced to about 10 million as far as the need to supplement the food services employees. You should also know that all of the food service employees are, are working. None of them are idle. They, it, it does take quite a bit more staff to do what we're doing than it does to run the regular cafeterias. The work is different. Staff are preparing, portioning, wrapping and packing all the cold meals, all social distancing. The packing of the meals and the snacks is time consuming. They have to be packed at a production site and then put into a cooler and transported and only, you know, 25 to 30 meals will fit on a cooler. So there's all kinds of reasons why it's actually taking us more, you know, all of our staff to be able to stand up all of these different meal options for the community. The program counting is manual, it's, it's, it's pencil and paper for breakfast, lunch, snack and supper. And, you know, most of our hourly food service workers have three and a half base hours per day. And so we are easily able to have all of our food service workers contribute.
Oh, Ms. Burden, you lost your sound. Is your sound stolen?
Yeah, we have had some instances where some, a few schools have asked food services employees to assist with library book distribution, stuffing envelopes, supply distribution, those sorts of things. And where, and you know, even be a classroom monitor. And where we're able to do that, we help with those functions as well.
So Ms. Burden, I had heard some conflicting information. Are you saying that our cafeteria workers are working at 100% capacity, that people are, are working and not staying home, but on, being on the payroll?
They're all working. They're, I mean, we-
They're all working at full capacity?
I believe that they are all working at full capacity, except for people who, of course, are on approved leave. Or I think we may have less than 20 people that we are still trying to place out of 1,123.
Okay. I, I appreciate that clarity because I, I've been hearing conflicting information.
Ms. McLaughlin, do you want to have a go back or are you okay?
That'd be great. I would like a go back. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I will say it seems very clear from what Ms. Burden is saying that that's what the data are showing, so, um, you know.
I'm sorry, Ms. Marin, Ms. Marin, my go back has nothing to do with cafeteria workers. We're talking about the budget.
You want to go back then, Ms. McLaughlin? Thank you.
Your editorializing is an-
Ms. Mulberg, I will go ahead and take my turn, please. I, in listening to Ms. Sizemore Heiser, I was reminded of Fairfax County strategic plan, which was revealed earlier this year through, after an extensive community engagement process. And two of those strategic areas, economic opportunity and lifelong education and learning priority areas are really ripe for us to show the county how well we help them meet their strategic goals. So I think, and we can certainly talk about this further in our budget committee meetings, Ms. Burden and Ms. Wigginton and with this chair, Ms. Burden and Kofax, but, you know, how we can present information to show that especially in these times when jobs are scarce and people are losing their jobs, we are actually helping with economic development by retaining staff, repurposing staff, being creative. I think that is a really great point to underline, you know, again, as well as there, was it the lifelong, lifelong learning piece? So, so I will say that. And I did just want to say too, more to, to Ms. McLaughlin's comment and just my initial comment, that I'm trying to facilitate discussion today and have pushed the envelope a little bit in just keeping time and monitoring who's speaking, but really helping us to make meaning of the good work being done and not be labor where, you know, answers have been given. So just trying to be really efficient with our time. Our budget staff has tremendous plate of work. And so whatever questions and information we ask today about the fiscal forecast is really where we want to be staying and especially preparing for that Board of Supervisors meeting in just a few weeks. So if anyone else who hasn't spoken yet would like a turn, please let me, oh, Dr. Brabran, did you want to add to that?
Just a quick comment about your strategic focus and some board members, actually all the board members have started to speak to this. You know, the idea, COVID has to be now part of our strategic planning, whether it's short-term, midterm, long-term, COVID has now inserted itself as a part of our strategic plan. And I like the point that we're, we're going to need to, with the true one Fairfax approach on equity and on collaboration with the county, we need to look at the county strategic plan as well as we come to this joint meeting and talk about how we're going to work together as a community to, to really come out of this and prepare our kids and our residents to not just survive the pandemic, but thrive after this pandemic has ended. So I, I like the discussions about the buckets and the strategic thinking. We're beginning that thinking with the County Executive and Mr. Manduro. We need to think out of the box. We need to be more creative than ever before as we look at both of our organizations and really align to our strategic plans. And COVID is in both of them. And how we come out of COVID is going to have a lasting impact for our school system and for county government. So thank you for those comments and that setup and we'll continue to listen to your conversation today.
Great, thanks, Dr. Brabran. Is anyone else who hadn't had a first, a first say and would like to speak? Okay, then, Ms. McLaughlin, I believe you're our only go back and you'll be the last speaker
Okay, I'm just trying to get my camera up. I would like to understand, as was noted, that right now with a very conservative budget, we don't have any employee raises and compensation increases listed right there, and I do understand that. But do think Ms. Marin as budget chair is something that was key to my role or work in this role, is looking at what's the county proposing. So, Dr. Brabran, I would hope you and the County Executive will remain very, very close on this issue, that whether employees work for the school system or they work for the county government, all of their, their salaries are drawn from taxpayers and we want equity for our employees in terms of ensuring whatever raises are done on the county side that are, that is considered in our budget needs as well. Secondly, I do also, I, I have concerns when, when we look at the healthcare costs. We had some employees that emailed me and said that their employee, employee contribution to their annual healthcare went up about 6%. I would like to know if that's accurate, if it went up 6% or what was the increase over the prior year. And recognizing that when that goes up, but compensations do not, people are actually working for less money in that given year than the year prior. And so this board has always talked, as you know, Dr. Brabran, about holding employees harmless wherever we can. So I would like an answer to that as well.
Sure. I'll, I'll make a brief comment and then Ms. Burden, please fill in. Or, you know, I see Mr. McDonald is here and may want to talk a little bit about the benefits. But nationally, the trend has been between 4% to 6%. I think we've, we fell right in the middle again, so we did see slight increases. And we know with frozen pay, that eats into that paycheck in January when that new benefit enrollment choices come out unless people go to a different, cheaper plan. We did do some nice things in benefits. D. Holly Brown did some nice enhancements. We moved away from Liberty Mutual as our disability provider, which was a very big win for our organization, staff organizations. We got a lot of feedback about going in a different direction and we did. But we are working closely with Brian Hill, the County Executive. We know that compensation is an issue. People are working harder than they ever have in their entire careers. And what are we going to do to provide compensation to support them? So it's a conversation, I'm glad you flagged it for now, and I hope the board wants to have this conversation with the county. I think we need to have a unified message around compensation where we can provide it and talk about how we do that with an equity focus for both organizations. So thanks, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Burden, anything you'd add to that?
No, you nailed it.
Okay, great. Mr. Smith, did you want to mention something or no?
I apologize. That was, that was an error. Dr. Brabran did a great job of answering that question.
Hello, anyway. Well, thank you. And certainly, certainly the materials for that joint meeting will be available prior, Ms. Burden, right? For the board to review and-
I can only tell you historically, they are posted that usually the day of or the day before on the county's website.
Okay, so we in our budget committee meeting often, you know, but we will be reviewing them beforehand?
I mean, our, our presentation will, you know, remain exactly the same as we've presented here. The county's presentation, of course, we don't have any control over. I'm not sure, you know, whether their plans are to have that earlier this year, but the last couple of years that I've been involved in it, it's usually available the day before or the day of. And that's when everybody would get a copy of it.
Well, I would, I would like us to think about perhaps reformatting some of the information to speak to the county strategic plan to really, you know, hone on that. So at our budget committee meeting, and, you know, welcome Mr. Kofax's input as well, but I'd like us to consider that forward. And, you know, Ms. McLaughlin, I know you have, you're the past budget chair, you have a lot of experience, so I welcome you to join, you know, that worker, you know, we can meet and, and add your input to help strengthen that, that presentation. So I think we've got to make it as strong as ever this year, so.
Absolutely. Ms. Marin, I did see that this was supposed to go till 12:30 and it's only 11:52. So I, I do have other questions about the fiscal forecast. I know that not many of our colleagues have spoken during this portion of the meeting, which surprises me. But I, I would like to ask that since we're scheduled to go for technically another 37 minutes or so, can I just ask a few more questions?
You know, I was, I realized that too, Ms. McLaughlin, I was thinking about that. And, you know, I was wondering, like, on the one hand, if the time was for the whole board and I know that you have good questions, that's why I'm wondering if perhaps you wanted to meet, you know, directly with the budget staff, perhaps that would be good, you know, I'm trying to, there's certainly time to run quite over, so if we-
Yeah. I think, I should, I should rephrase it. What I was actually hoping is what you did a great job setting us up in the beginning, which is for us to dialogue with each other. I mean, this fiscal forecast is, is troubling. We're talking $29 million.
Yeah. So I do see some other colleagues' hands up, so perhaps that's, we'll get that- Yeah, so I do see some other colleagues' hands up, so perhaps that's, we'll get that going. So, and then Ms. Corbett Sanders, so thank you.
I'd like to move to question, please, realizing that these are obviously important issues, but not surprised by how bad the picture is. So I think that may indicate why there's not a lot of conversation here is that the surprise is not there. So I'd like to move to question.
Okay, I, so can you, Mr. Fresh, with your limitless Robert rules expertise, can you explain to me?
It has limits, I swear. We just take a vote, and if two thirds of the board votes in favor of moving to previous question, then the conversation is over on this issue. It requires two thirds of a vote.
And then anyone scheduled to speak after does not speak. From this point, we just vote.
Correct.
Okay, so then we shall vote because the question was asked. So if we, I'm sorry, you're seconding Ms. Corbett Sanders?
No, I'm not.
This is Kim Gamarra, I'm trying, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, can you please only talk if I recognize you? So Mr. Fresh has asked for a question to be called, is there a second on that? Someone could raise their handers. Ms. Cohen seconds. Okay, so we will take a vote on the question of to close a discussion about this fiscal forecast. So if you would like to close the discussion on this fiscal forecast, please cast your vote now in affirmative. So I've got Mr. Fresh, Ms. Mikarsky, Ms. Cohen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Tolan, and I'll count myself as sixth. So that is not a majority. So I don't believe that we need to then?
Well, I hope some folks will speak up then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Corbett Sanders, I believe you were next to speak.
Yes, thank you. And I actually want to speak about this in the context of how difficult this conversation can be, given that we have to, we have the conversation about the budget overview and the digging more deeply into the budget. And so I would suggest that in the future, we try to maybe combine the two because they go hand in hand. And so I did not support the call, the question, because I do believe that we scheduled time to have a conversation. But what I would like to do is move this conversation more into the conversation about what are some of the things, what are the priority items that we want to look at and how do we want to look at them in the context of our budgeting process? In particular, and I have, I will refer back to the follow on motion of Ms. Mikarsky and myself last spring, which was for the budgeting process to include our operational expectations requirement, which has us look at previous spending, current spending, and then projected spending, so that you can see what areas are actually growing exponentially versus other areas. And it does create a more transparent approach to how we look at our budgeting. And it is something that we did do in the past where we had quite a bit more budget data provided to us.
Ms. Burden, would you like to speak to that and perhaps how the program budget review might speak to some of that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Mrs. Wiggington, the budget director is going to go over the budget review next, because, you know, we're, we're aware that the, you know, one of the main reasons that we're doing the budget review, well, the, the main reason we're doing the budget review is because the school board expressed interest in having much deeper discussions about the $3.1 billion, not just the increase. And so when Ms. Wiggington goes over that, you know, she will talk about the fact that, you know, the school board members have expressed a desire to find efficiencies. They've expressed a desire to be able to repurpose funds towards other initiatives. There may be a need to find efficiencies in order to address revenue shortfalls. So they do go hand in hand, but the budget review is primarily to just, is to provide information about the departments and the programs within the departments and, you know, what we're funding and what is that funding supposed to be doing?
I appreciate that, Ms. Burden, but as you and I have spoken for several years, we need to link this to what our strategic plan objectives are as well. And what we haven't done is done that linkage between how we're spending that $3.1 million and what our strategic objectives are. And so I do think that as we go through this, there needs to be that linkage, which you and Mr. Smith committed to having done a couple of years ago. So I am hoping that this year we actually achieve it.
And I, that's part of it. That's part of the budget review is the department leadership, and they talk about their, the programs within their budget and the funding and the positions. They also will talk about how that, that funding aligns with the strategic plan.
And I appreciate that, thank you. And I'm glad you raised the issue of this year being a tight budget year because that is going to have to be one of our strategic imperatives is how to fill that gap of $29 million. And I do not want to have another one of those years where we're talking about cutting our strings and music programs and other enrichment programs that are so important to addressing the needs of the whole child. And I also want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for raising the issue of the concerns about this budget request that we raised last spring. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think too, you know, just reflecting again on, on work and work planning, program budget is one approach to trying to get to the information that the board is seeking. I mean, is it going to be the be all end all? No, but it's what can be done right now. So I think, you know, trying to understand what we're able to get with the current, you know, resources we have is, you know, that it's helpful to frame our, our work that Any additional comments or questions other than Ms. McLaughlin? Ms. Kiesgumara, you had raised your hand earlier, did you want to add something?
I just wanted, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Fine, thank you.
Just want to be sure. Okay, so, well, we're back where we were in having time, which is nice. Ms. Seismar Heiser, I see you've raised your hand.
Yeah, I was going to say at this point, I didn't vote earlier on the motion, I didn't think I could bring the motion back at this point. I think since everyone who had wanted to go back has gotten one and spoken, it may be good to call the question to end the conversation at this point. I wanted to make sure, I knew some people had wanted to go back previously before we voted. I wanted to make sure they had their chance to speak. I think it's important for all of our voices to be heard.
Please, are you calling the question?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I'll, I'll take Mr. Fresh. Symmetry there. Okay, so all in favor of closing the conversation about the budget forecast at this time, please raise your hands. So we've got Ms. Seismar Heiser, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Sanders, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Derna Kofax, Ms. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Tolan, myself, Ms. Kiesgumara, Ms. Mikarsky, Ms. McLaughlin. So that is unanimous. So we will close the portion on the fiscal forecast at this time, and the budget committee will work in follow up, and Ms. McLaughlin, I look forward to your input. Okay, then, so we will move ahead to the next budget related item, which is the program budget review. And we had scheduled 30 minutes for this, and let me frame it by saying that today we're going to hear this information that's going to kick off what we have planned to be monthly program review presentations to the board. And so you'll hear a brief summary about the budget development process, which I know is not new for some of you, some key data points about the school operating fund, and then the information about what will be in these monthly presentations of the budget review. So stemming most recently from the FY21 budget work earlier this year, school board members have asked, you know, for more information about that, of which that makes up the bulk of that $3 billion. The board is interested in better understanding how these public dollars are being spent and where efficiencies could be realized to better invest what works for student success, including aligning budget items with the FCPS strategic plan. So these program budget reviews are in addition to the work happening among the board and staff to develop the next fiscal year's budget. But this is a sizable amount of work that impacts not only the budget staff, but the program staff as well. So specifically, the superintendent's proposed budget will continue to focus on the increases and decreases over the previous year's budget. A work schedule, a work session is going to be scheduled monthly, beginning next week, through the final budget adoption in the spring, so we could take a deeper look into the details of the department's budgets and programs. So on November 10th, next week, on Tuesday, staff will review with us selected staffing standards compared to the standards of quality, with explanations about each staffing formula and how that determines staffing levels at schools. Then in December, we'll focus on the Department of Instruction, and it's also planned to focus on the Department of School Improvement and Support. It's a really big workload, so these are, you know, this is the drafted plan, so please, you know, stand by in case there needs to be some adjustments, but this is, is the goal here. But as we saw in the fiscal forecast, new revenue will likely be very limited, so that reductions might have to be identified to meet the FY22 funding levels. So these program reviews and finding potential efficiencies is more timely than ever. So as always, school board members will provide and deliberate on ideas and approaches to maximize funding to meet the priorities and the strategic plan. So Ms. Alice Wiggington is now going to present this budget review information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. May I ask Ms. Madeha? Thank you. Ms. Madeha, if you could just progress to the next slide. Good afternoon, members of the board. In preparation for the upcoming department budget review, today's presentation will provide an overview of our budget development process, summary information about our school operating fund, and information about a systematic review of the operating budget utilizing this budget review process. If we can move to the next slide. Through the budget development process last year and even the discussions that have happened today, there was quite a great interest about discussing not just the annual increase in the budget from one year to the next, but the total $3.1 billion budget. To meet that objective, each department will be presenting their budgets in greater detail through this budget review process. This process is a collaborative effort between the Department of Financial Services and each one of our departments throughout the division. A few weeks ago, the Office of Budget Services conducted a workshop for our program managers to discuss common elements to be included in each department's budget review presentation. A framework has been shared to provide consistency while also allowing flexibility to include information that is relevant to their mission and their work. The next slide, please. The rationale, as is consistent with the conversations that we just had around the fiscal forecast, is that there is great interest in finding efficiencies within our budget, exploring opportunities to repurpose our funds, either for new initiatives to align to our strategic plan, or the stated school board themes that we had earlier in September. We also might want to review some programs that may not align to the strategic plan, and also, as Ms. Burden said previously, that there might be a need to identify potential reductions to meet our FY22 funding levels based on our current fiscal climate. The next slide, please. This presentation again is for informational purposes. It will set the stage for the upcoming budget review presentations that Ms. Marin just highlighted. There are no decisions that are required from our school board today. But I'd like to share on the next slide is a graphic of our budget development process. It provides an overview, this is the typical graphic that we use in all of our budget documents. Our process begins through soliciting input from our stakeholders. And in the fall, just as we've presented, a fiscal forecast is presented with our underlying assumptions on what our anticipated costs are, our revenue projections, any position turnover, inflation, and also enrollment related needs that drive our budget development. The superintendent works closely with the school board as well as the leadership team to prioritize recommended budget requests. In November, the proposed budget is prepared and finalized in December, once the governor releases his budget that provides our early state revenue projections. In January, the superintendent releases his proposed budget, and following that, the school board holds public hearings and work sessions prior to adopting its advertised budget in February. The Board of Supervisors' consideration of the school board's advertised budget and school funding levels will occur through many conversations between February through May. Once the County Board of Supervisors adopts its budget in May and determines the transfer to FCPS, the school board then considers changes to its budget to meet the funding levels that are provided by both the Board of Supervisors and the state. The next slide, please. FCPS uses both an incremental and a zero-based approach to developing the budget. Our incremental budgeting is a method whereby where the upcoming budget is prepared by making changes, either through additions or reductions to our current year base, whereas zero-based budgeting does not consider the current year expenses and each year is developed from zero. Both our staffing at our schools and our per pupil allocations are all driven by student enrollment. School budgets that are driven by student enrollment start at zero and are recalculated each year. Also, our salary and benefit costs are calculated each year, regardless of any incremental changes that are in our budget. Next slide, please. When we look at where it comes from, this is our traditional pie chart that's included in our budget documents that provides our revenue by category. Our FY21 approved revenue budget totals $3.1 billion. As many of you know, state and county revenue combined provide 94.3% of all of our operating revenue. The remaining dollars comes from our federal funding as well as tuition for our students who reside outside of Fairfax County, including students from neighboring school divisions who attend TJ, some of our student fees, as well as one-time funding that we set aside for our beginning balance. The next slide, please. When we look at where it goes, FCPS presents these expenditure pie charts by category as illustrated on the left side and by program as illustrated on the right. The expenditures by major category are delineated by our salaries, employee benefits, logistics, and our transfers to our other funds. Salaries and benefits together comprise employee compensation, which represents the majority of our budget or 88.8%. Looking at the pie chart on the right side, by program, 86.2% of our budget is allocated to instructional programs. So that includes our elementary, our middle, our high, special education, as well as our instructional support program costs, with the remaining expenditures allocated towards our student transportation, management of our facilities, as well as our general and central administration support. Next slide, please. A total of 24,699.6 school operating fund positions are included in our FY21 budget. Of these positions, 93% or 22,975 budgeted positions are in our classrooms and school buildings directly serving the needs of our students, while the remaining 7% or 1,724 are positions that deliver central support to our schools. Next slide, please. As has been mentioned earlier in the overview, our upcoming budget presentations will be conducted through a phased approach with added additional work sessions that have been scheduled from November through May to review each area of the budget. The information will be delineated, department budgets by office, the allocation of those resources to accomplish their mission with linkages to the strategic plan, any of our school board themes, as well as school allocations where appropriate. The next slide, please. Here's our tentative budget schedule. As you will see, on November 10th, we will provide detailed information on our staffing formulas and our resources provided directly to our schools. It will include VDOE staffing standards as outlined in the standards of quality and how they compare to FCPS's staffing practices. Over the next few months, the remainder of the budget will be presented from a department office perspective with linkages back to school information that was presented on just, on November the 10th. As you can see from the schedule, ISD and our Department of School Improvement and Supports are scheduled to present their information on December the 8th, followed by Special Services on January 17. followed by Special Services on January the 12th and our Facilities and Transportation Department on February the 16th. In March, HR and DIT will follow with Financial Services and other central offices such as our superintendent, our deputy, our chief operating officer, our region offices in April. The plan is to discuss any remaining topics with a wrap-up scheduled in May. This concludes the presentation, and I thank you for the opportunity to share this overview about our budget.
Thanks for speaking too. Okay, Ms. Darren Kofax, would you like to open up questions?
Nope, I'm sorry. My hand went up by mistake. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Tolan.
Yes, I just have a quick question. You know, looking at that list of, you know, the various topics each month. I mean, if you just take ISD for example, that's a huge department. Our Facilities and Transportation, huge department. It covers lots and lots of budget areas and offices. How would, what would you suggest from a board member's point of view, like how to prepare for those monthly meetings? Like what kinds of things would you think we should be reviewing or taking a look at or conversations that we should be having prior to each of those meetings? I don't know, maybe Ms. Marin or Ms. Darren Kofax, even as budget chair and vice chair, if you have some ideas around that.
I can't say I've thought about that in detail. I know for me, I kind of want to absorb what you put out there, especially with the first one, and see, you know, what's going.
So again, I guess you're imagining, and please, you know, Ms. Wigginton or Ms. Burden jumping here too, are you imagining those are more informational presentations about here's what the current budget is or what we've been spending over the past year? Here's things that have gone up and down over the years. Here are new programs. And then we'll be having subsequent conversations around that as we put together the full budget moving toward May.
So I think maybe a helpful resource for all board members might be, there is a section, a department section within our approved budget. And what it does is it lays out the organizational chart. Sorry, getting feedback. I don't know if that's me. One moment. Let me make sure. Okay.
If you might, maybe Ms. Tolan, that might help just with the feedback, please.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. So what, there is a department section towards the, it's at the end of the expenditure section in our approved budget documents. Our approved budget is laid out by revenue and expenditures. And then, and then after that, it walks into each department's budget as a high-level overview. So it's not going to show the level of detail that we're anticipating that our departments are going to be reviewing with you. But what it does do is it gives an organizational chart to give you a sense of the office structure within each department. And it also provides both their school-based and non-school-based, what we refer to as their department resource charts within there, and provides a high-level summary of what's in the budget just to give you a sense. I would anticipate that as part of this, it is also educational for the board because of all those interests that they had, that we want our departments to really share the work that they do, what it costs for them to do that. And then all of the school, you know, their work is so tied, especially our instructional departments tied to what's happening in the schools. And we would anticipate that they would provide those linkages and also, you know, set that framework for you, give you a sense of what they do and how it relates to the mission of what we do. So I think that would be a good start if I had to think really quickly about what might be helpful to the board to absorb in kind of a summary, not completely overwhelming way.
And I would also add, within that budget book, we provide, I'm turning my camera on here, apologize. We provide an explanation of expenditures. And so there's a six-year lookback of that explanation of expenditures. And it might give you a better sense of the dollars with full-time, part-time salaries along with logistics, just to help frame the conversation as we move forward.
And those funds are separated in the approved budget document by non-school-based and school-based with a description of each of the programs. As Alice said, the first page is an organizational chart, which is very helpful to see what kind of staffing is allocated towards each of the programs in the departments. And you also can, you know, go on the website and under the search bar, type in budget documents, and you can look at the fiscal '21 detail budget, and that will take you to spreadsheets online that go by school, by department, by program, and show every line item of every salary, every logistic line item, and the totals that would link up with the approved budget. So if you want that granular detail, the detailed budget on the budget webpage is the place to go.
Awesome. Yeah, I have taken a look at that document. All right. Thank you. We look forward to our more detailed conversations on all of this.
Ms. Cohen.
I just want to say thank you so much. I know that we have some time to review all of this. I appreciate the really measured way that you guys are bringing each group together to really figure out, I think for so long, we keep having these conversations that, you know, how, how do we truly evaluate where we have need? And how do we do it in a really strategic way when you're talking about sort of a systemic, you know, problem that we have of understaffing, of people who are doing, you know, five people's jobs? And I think to be able to quantify that is hugely important as a system. And I'm very appreciative of you all being willing, especially with, I know the crazy workload right now, to undertake the work that it takes to really step back and examine that we have and look at what has been grandfathered in, what are things that we need to be doing that maybe we're not doing? And the idea that we sometimes have to make decisions where we look forward and say, is this program, whatever its intention was, is it best serving the needs of our kids right now? And I think that in the world of all of the things that COVID has brought to us, which have been awful, I do think that there's some opportunities for some real reflection that we have here as a system of what are we doing to make sure? I know that Dr. Braybrand frequently says, "by name of my need." And by name of my need has a dollar figure. And so how do we figure out if what we're doing and things that we've institutionalized, are they really meeting the needs going forward of our 21st century and beyond learners? So thank you for that. I know that this is no small undertaking. And thank you so much to Ms. Marin and Ms. Darren at Kofax for really pushing for us to be able to look in a very comprehensive way at our budget. So thanks.
Ms. Cohen. Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes. So following what Ms. Cohen just said, I am pleased that both the prior board and the current board have given this direction to the superintendent and his team. It's long been needed to look at our program budget and really understand what programs we're delivering. And to Ms. Cohen's point, are they still serving the mission-critical purpose of helping each and every student be successful? My concern is on Slide 11, the way in which staff has presented, as I, as I'm seeing their, their, their direction from our board is that it says, "The review will include department mission, functions of each office, and the allocation of resources to accomplish the work, highlighting the links to strategic plan and board themes." What, I'm not sure because of how it's showing up on my screen because it's cut off at the bottom. But Dr. Braybrand, as we talk often about the superintendent role versus the school board member role, can you speak to how your, you and your team are going to actually bring not just the information, but your operational expertise on whether or not you see any budgetary changes to the work that's being done by these programs and within each of these departments? Because if it's just information only, I'm very sensitive in COVID that if we're not actually using this through your role and your responsibility to create the most fiscally responsible, effective, and efficient and successful budget, then it's certainly not for 12 board members to start digging in and picking apart, especially during a COVID year. So I'd really appreciate if you could help me and perhaps others have a greater understanding if this is just information only, why are we not getting more of the recommendations and analysis that I think would be needed? And if it's that there's just so much going on with COVID right now, then let's have that conversation.
Yeah, Ms. McLaughlin, thank you so much for that question. One, we obviously want to share the information and elevate for the board and the community a greater understanding of what's in our operational budget because that's one of the big discussions. All this, you've always talked about what's additional. We put a strategic lens on that. So part one, goal one, is a strategic lens on the existing $3.1 billion. Absolutely, as we go through this, if we find, especially with COVID, and we know the budget's tight, if we find cost efficiencies or reallocations, we're going to make those suggestions for the board throughout the process. And you see the timeline, I mean, again, I want to just be honest, right? The timeline of the departments goes through the, you know, I'll present my budget in January. We'll still have some more departments. So there may be things that aren't in the January budget, but we may come across later, right, in the spring that could still influence the final budget that's adopted. And you see the, the list that we have. We've tried to put some of the big ones up front, Ms. McLaughlin. But yes, if we find efficiencies and reallocations that we think fit to the strategic plan and continue to give us dollars that we may not be able to find elsewhere, we're absolutely going to bring those forward. Is it going to be a big lift? Yes. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. But it's really two things. It's elevating understanding of the current budget and then where possible, where we find efficiencies or reallocations to bring them to you.
And Ms. McLaughlin, I might also add that we've asked our staff to not necessarily bring a brag list forward, but have really asked them to look at the programs and student outcomes and whether or not the particular programs have gotten the outcomes that we've been looking for. And to certainly bring those that have supported student achievement and perhaps have that discussion about those that haven't done what we've wanted them to do in the past. So that in conjunction with a very good board discussion, I think might provide more information for the board as we go through the budget development process.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So what you're saying is that when the leadership team members are doing this pre-work before it comes to the board, there is going to be a focus on, hey, as we even drill down as operational leaders, are we seeing some of these programs that, good intent, not necessarily delivering in the manner that we'd like to see? And so we're going to make some recommendations to the superintendent and the board that we might repurpose, reallocate the program work?
I think that some of that could come from the discussion. They won't necessarily, at this point of the process, be recommended reductions, but certainly have discussions about areas where we see programs have been more beneficial for students and programs that may not have been as beneficial. But would again be certain, would again be available during the budget process to answer questions and help the board make decisions about whether or not those programs should be continued.
Well, Mr. Smith, my concern is if we don't have staff recommendations, you're asking board members to almost make operational recommendations post-oversight. So that's my concern. Ms. Marin, I know my time is up, so I'll either go for go-back if people are going to permit it within the time or I can always just follow up with staff.
Great. Thank you. And just to confirm, we are good to go until 1:00. We have a break at 1:00, everyone. So. Thank you. Mr. Fresh, followed by Ms. Q.
Thank you. So first, I, you know, many of us were eager last year, which feels like a decade ago, last school year, to dig in on the program budget. And I'm grateful that our then-budget leadership, Ms. McLaughlin and Dr. Anderson, were able to help us navigate not one, but two budgets in less than a year, as well as begin shifting the way that the board does its budgeting. I'm also grateful for the work that we've already seen laid out by our new budget leadership, Ms. Marin and Ms. Darren Kofax, because it really is showing the direction that we asked things to go. And like anything that's brand new, it's going to be a little, you know, wonky, right? It's going to be a little challenging for all of us. And I want to pick up a little bit where Ms. McLaughlin left off on the request for suggestions. I think when we talk about the program budget, we need to embrace the headache of bureaucratic change. You know, I realize that when we say this program could do better, there are going to be school communities and there are going to be staff members who say, "We love that program." That's to be anticipated. But we need to accept that that's going to happen so that we can have a clear-headed conversation about it. So I would just implore our staff to embrace the challenge during these very challenging times, to have those conversations so that we can do a better job as a board. It would be a different conversation entirely if each board member had budget staff to work on analyzing numbers and digging through the morass of hundreds of millions of dollars. But that's what we rely on all of y'all for. And so while we do that individually, we need to have that, you know, underscored by our leadership in staff. And so, you know, for me, this is important because in these troubling economic times, if we can do this now, it will pay dividends for us when the economy begins to improve. Because every dollar that we save is a dollar that we can reinvest in the priorities that we all have. And so if we can do that now while we have few dollars to go around, as things begin to improve in the years ahead, we will be able to make sounder investments. And it will also change the shape of the way that we think about budgeting in this school system. That we're no longer just thinking about new money and how we get to play with it. We're thinking about whether those investments are the right investments, whether they're having the results that we all wanted them to have so that they're not just sticking around in the program budget year after year after year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh.
Yes, thank you. I too wanted to follow up on Ms. McLaughlin's statement because I think that this is important. In my time on the board, I know that we have been constantly fighting to get to a place where we could review where we are in our budget, but also to have the data and the metrics by which to judge appropriately. And so while I appreciate this paragraph at the bottom that says, "The review will include the department mission functions of each office and the allocation of resources to accomplish the work," I think that we might want to look at this through the lens of what, not only, how is it tied to the strategic plan, but what are our metrics for evaluating effectiveness of what we are reviewing? And so I realize that we're, this is going to be a slow turn. We're not going to do it all at once. But I think if we had, again, a standardized way to look at how each of these, the segments of our budget, it would perhaps be a better tool for all of us. And I'd like to hear some comment on that, as well as how we might be able to incorporate that process throughout the year. I don't think we're going to be, you know, we're not going to be, this isn't a one-time deal. And so we may want to think about how are we communicating throughout the year to the community and the board to continuously be receiving that type of information?
So, so Ms. Keys-Gamora.
So, Ms. Kies-Gamara, I would share that the budget process is always a work in progress, and we are consistently and constantly taking input from stakeholders to make it a better process. I think when we look at some of the metrics you're talking about, they are part of our current strategic planning process, and that over time, we might see a better way to link our goal reports and the work that we put into those goal reports, which are very clearly driven by metrics, and to add more of a budget, a budget process as part of those strategic plan goal reports. And as Ms. Corporate Sanders has shared, to bring that strategic plan focused together with the budget process. So it's kind of a melding of the two, so that we're not going down two separate paths, or bringing them all together. And I think that that's working with the board leadership, it's working with the board to schedule and bring those processes together. A lot of that work, I don't want to say that it's paused, but our primary concern now is return to school. And so there are heavy lifts on both sides of the fence. And so what you'll be seeing as we bring the goal reports this year, there's a lot of information in those goal reports, it's abbreviated information. I think that that's a first step that the board could take around metrics to marry that with the information that we're going to share as part of the budget review. And then in the future, it's bringing those processes closer together.
So I agree with that. I do recall, in being in many work sessions, pretty much, almost all of them, there is a question about metrics. Where's the metrics? How is the decision-making? And so I'm trying to interject at this point, to make sure that that focus happens from the beginning, right? So that we don't have to put that question forward, but understand, I think that there is a need for that across the board. And when we have that data, it helps the board to understand as well as the community.
No, I certainly agree. And sometimes our timing is against us when our data is available and when certain budget decisions need to be made. As we look at the state calendars, we look at the county calendars, we look at our own budget calendar. And so it's trying to find some better alignment between our calendars, when data is available, and when we can make that data and those metrics available to the board.
I appreciate that. And I certainly understand the heavy lift of where we are right now. And so I just hope that that'll be a part of the process, the planning, so that we, when we are able to get our stride, we'll have that focus. Thank you.
Most definitely. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, and then Mr. Frisch, did you have another question after that? Are you still stretching?
Oh man, you took my joke from me. I'm sorry about that.
Paying attention. Okay, Ms. McLaughlin.
Great, thank you. I do appreciate both Mr. Frisch and Ms. Kies-Gamara's remarks in sort of rounding out where my, my hope and wanting to have for everybody a sort of a, kind of a clear expectation in support of our superintendent. I know there are 12 different elected individuals with different perspectives on the budget work. And so days like today are really important, that he and his team have sort of a clear understanding of our expectations. Ms. Kies-Gamara, you really captured it well, that, Mr. Smith, I do appreciate that you all work really hard on goal reports, you work hard on the information you bring us about the budget itself. But there's data, there's metrics, and then there's the data analysis, and also sometimes data in context. And so I do think that, just reiterating how important it's going to be, that it's the meaningful data analysis that will not just say, here's the number of students we serve in this program, here's the amount of staff, and here's the dollars, but what have we seen in terms of growth in membership? Or the growth in performance for students, if it's a program that's meant to help our students show their ability to achieve at the highest levels? And, you know, one thing in mind that I can think of as a good example is how we're delivering the IB curriculum in Fairfax County. We have certainly a deep appreciation for the value of the IB program. And some of our high schools have extremely high levels of students engaged in not just the IB work, but the IB diploma itself. But it varies across schools. And we've had these IB programs in our schools for a long time. We've then grown it to the middle school level and the primary school level. But I think we need to be thinking about why we have the Advanced Placement Program in some schools, IB in other schools, some schools have both. And what are we seeing in terms of the cost per pupil to run those programs? Is it different at each school, depending on how involved the students are in taking advantage of the IB program? I mean, those are, those are questions that, when we look at costs, and IB in a grand scheme mind, it can be one of our big cost dollar deliveries. That's the kind of analysis that I think ideally we want to strive for. I still understand in COVID, that this first pass in the first year will be maybe not what we all want to have happen, but Mr. Frisch said it best, that we're laying the foundation. And I appreciate that.
And Ms. McLaughlin, what I can share is that, so over time, I think that we will get there. And I'm encouraged by the board looking at its priorities, as you always do, and then better aligning those priorities with where we are sort of during COVID and post-COVID. We were engaged in a process with the strategic plan before the pandemic hit. And so we kind of paused there. We'll have some recommendations for the board with this next round of strategic plan reports that clearly have strategic considerations for the board, policy considerations for the board, and budgetary considerations for the board. So that's another piece of analysis that you'll be able to use as part of this process. But most definitely, I think that it's once the board is able to identify those areas that are most important, then we work together to bring you the information that you need to make better decisions and that we can all use to provide better supports for students and families.
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith.
I'll use this opportunity to take my turn, see no one else waiting. So, you know, I view this, especially the first one, as an opportunity to see, you know, what if something good happens? And we see what's presented. I mean, this is a first, and in the honor of the education, we'll see what flushes out. I think, you know, certainly feedback's been shared today, but I do think that staff is aware of the kind of detail that we're seeking. Again, you know, time will limit what can be provided. But I really also hope that we can shift a bit in these spaces towards asking staff a lot of questions, to talking with each other about what our budget priorities are and what we really want to fund. You know, we have conduits like the submitting budget questions, where we can ask staff very specific questions. There are also, I don't know if we're doing budget two-by-twos, no, no, we did those already. But so we can ask budget questions, you know, to staff directly, we can talk to each other. But, you know, the only opportunity we have all together to talk about our priorities is, you know, is together. So, you know, for me, I want to, at least initially, with the first presentation, look at it as a way for us to say, you know, huh, if that's where things are fleshing out, you know, what are our questions, but also what do each of us think? And how does that help us, you know, advise and build the budget for next year? So that's my thought. Ms. Darin Kofax, and then Ms. McLaughlin has a follow-up, since no one else is waiting. Thank you. Ms. Darin Kofax, you can go ahead.
I'm trying to get my, my things are slow this morning. So I do want to thank my colleagues. And for those who spoke, and if you, once you think about it more, if you want to reach out to Melanie and I, I think that will be important. I do appreciate, you know, the example that Ms. McLaughlin gave about big programmatic things. I don't know if we will be able to tackle all of that this first year, but I do want to kind of roll in the two topics we spoke of today. As you saw, one of the glaring omissions in the fiscal forecast was no compensation increases at all. And this would be the second year in a row if this comes to pass. But we are in a crisis, we are in a place where these COVID numbers are rising daily, and we are not sure where we are going to be, no matter how much we wish we could be somewhere else. So when we look at the totality of where we are in the program budget, and I, I wish I could say, this is not the first time, this may be the first time, this board is looking at the program budget, but the program budget has been looked at at length by previous boards. There was a task force that came out when many cuts had to be made, and it was mostly from program budget that these cuts were looked at and proposed. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity to look for efficiencies, to move forward, to have these conversations as we go forward. But I do want people to understand that I don't think there are big cash cows there, I can say that from experience. But I do think this is the time to have these conversations and to have opportunities to look at what we value as a system, what we value as a system in a crisis that we are in and will most likely continue to be in for the next few months. And then maybe develop some short and long-term priorities. Like right now, maybe we need to put the brakes on this, we can, we can ease up on that later. So I just wanted you to know where I'm coming from. And as you kind of sift this through, and as we go through these, as we go through these different programs, and we see the cost and dollar figures associated with them, I think it's going to give you all some food for thought and opportunities for broader conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Darin Kofax. Anderson, you haven't spoken yet, please go ahead.
Thank you. I will leave my audio, my camera off, because I had so many issues earlier. I do want to say I'm very appreciative of the comments that have been made, primarily what Tammy just offered. It's one thing to really want to have efficiencies, but we are still in this crisis. And I appreciate the reminder to take a look at this budget process through that lens as well. You know, a very unpopular thing to do when looking at budgets, as somebody who worked in schools and had to help make these decisions for a number of years, when we're looking for efficiencies, the biggest bang for the buck is what directly impacts the classroom. And I would say that, and I invite Ms. Burden to also confirm, because from my experience, when we're looking at needing to make concessions, and I'm not saying this is a thing to do or not to do, but the biggest thing for our buck is raising class sizes. That's how you end up getting a lot of savings. And I'm, again, I'm not supporting that this be done, I just want to make sure that it's, it's shared. And I do, I would like for Ms. Burden to, to share that, to, I'm sorry, confirm that. Having said that, one of the things that I also wanted to say is, I am looking forward to having this conversation regarding our program budget, because I think some of the statements that Ms. Cohen and Ms. McLaughlin shared earlier really resonate with me. Where are we spending our dollars? And are we very, are we suited, are we being well-served by spending it, by spending them in that way? I do realize the constraints for staff because of where we are. I do appreciate that Megan also said that we are looking for guidance from staff as the non-operational experts. But I'm looking forward for that conversation, because I think it will give us a much more informed point of perspective in order to continue to make these decisions. So I just wanted to share that. But I would like for Ms. Burden to clarify the statement that I've made, if possible.
Yes, you, you're absolutely right, Dr. Anderson. You know, it predates my history with Fairfax. But this organization has a long history of kind of nickel-and-diming their way through the departments. You don't get enough funding there to do much, because it's such a small portion of the budget. You know, 90% of our budget is salaries and benefits. And, you know, the majority of that is school-based. If you are looking for big money, the only place to get that is with compensation and class size. Because the rest of it is such a small portion, that it's very difficult to achieve, you know, large savings just by looking at that funding.
Thank you. And Ms. Marin, those were all of my statements. I appreciate the time, this was very helpful. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And Ms. Amash, I see you have a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to everyone who, you know, put this together, I'm really looking forward to this. I just actually had one question, I know I've brought this up in meetings before, the two-by-twos and whatnot, regarding the piece that is the benefits. I know, you know, as you've just said, Ms. Burden, the biggest pieces are, yeah, there's class size, but also the employee piece. And I certainly would be interested in maybe when that comes, I don't know if any work has been done on this since, but looking at alternatives that could afford us the same, but that are more affordable in how we offer certain services or benefits, that maybe, I'm sure it's wrapped up in tons of, you know, regulations and best practice and this, other considerations. But I continue to push that I think that's an area where we can really push the needle if we're, if we're kind of thoughtful and innovative about how we could do it differently. I don't know, Ms. Burden, if you've had the chance at all to look at it since last year's budget conversation, or just in general, what your thoughts are on the possibility to do that, when we, when we do examine it more closely.
Are you talking about employee benefits, like healthcare, those sorts of things?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we are, we are self-funded, which is the most cost-effective way to fund a healthcare program. VRS, FCERS, ERFC, the retirement programs, you know, they, they have been reduced over time. And so that's why we have different tiers in those. But those are really the purview of the state with ERFC, that's Fairfax County School Board. And FCERS is the county board. But as far as healthcare goes, you know, with a self-funded plan, essentially, the premiums that the employees are paying, and the premiums that the employer is paying, that's a shared cost, basically cover the claims. So, you know, the only way really that you can reduce those costs is to change the plan design, to reduce the level of benefits. I mean, there are other things that you can do that we, of course, have already done. And that is, you know, provide incentives for people to, you know, use generic prescriptions instead of, you know, name-brand prescriptions. You know, discourage, you know, provide incentives that discourage people from using the emergency room as their primary care physician. But we've pretty much done all of those things. So it's, the claims experience or our employees' usage of the healthcare is what drives the premium. So we're not paying, you know, a big administrative fee to some other party to administer the healthcare programs for us. But having said that, you know, that is something that the employee benefits in the HR group are continually, all year long, looking at. And that is, how can we reduce the cost of our healthcare?
Yeah. No, I want to be extremely clear, I'm not advocating to minimize any benefits or anything to that, you know, to that degree. But I appreciate you outlining that. I think, I would hope, maybe as we look at these more closely and thinking about areas to be more efficient, as you pointed out, rather than maybe the penny-pinching on smaller items, to think of those big items and consider the possibilities of how we can be innovative or creative to do, you know, to, to, to find alternatives that are more cost-effective. But in any case, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Want to add something?
Yeah, just real quick, the program review is going to be helpful for you to see the full breadth of programs. But like Ms. Burden said, one particular program, and this has been part of, I think, sometimes the challenge in the budget process over the years, over the decades, one program is brought out to be put, or a couple of programs on the chopping block that drive community response. And I think we've got to get beyond trying to do that. We've got to say, are these programs still effective and are they meeting our strategic goals? But one of the bigger things that Ms. Burden said, most of our buck is personnel. Most of our personnel are in schools, and most of our personnel are distributed based on formulas. The very first meeting we have coming up on the schedule you see is looking at our selected staffing and how that compares to state staffing models. That is where there is a lot that we can talk about, but we have always gone far above and beyond the state as we've staffed our schools. And I think we need to look at that, and we also need to look at that with an eye to how do we try to do something for compensation for our teachers when frankly, looking, looking currently, our assumptions are very, very tight revenue increases from the county, potentially none. So how do we drive revenue or look at our formulas that could free up getting us more compensation for our folks who are absolutely going above and beyond like never before? And I think that's part of the conversation. Again, the very next one is looking at that SOQ formulas and looking at our staffing formulas as well. So I think that's going to be a very powerful conversation for the board, and we look forward to having it with you and talking about where the priority is around those formulas, but also around compensation for our employees. Thanks.
Yeah, Dr. Braybrand, thank you for adding that. And to that point, in terms of how to prioritize, I know the schedule's been set and, you know, the presentation that was just shared, but I want to make sure we're constantly mindful too of, the, the last place I want us to consider is the classroom, the direct classroom piece, right? Like that is why we're here and looking at the other areas in advance of that, or at least having that in mind when we do look at those areas.
Absolutely. The formulas that we'll share will include classroom formulas and, you know, office formulas. We have, we have all kinds of formulas to share to let you see. Some, some generate, some generate formulas for staffing in schools and others, others are formulas that have support staff. So, and some where we don't actually have formulas that drive support changes, where enrollment has grown and HR still has the same staffing. Like school additional staffing based on enrollment growth, let's say HR does. And so I think it's going to be just a great discussion for us to have, and really, I will bring our best thinking, and we look forward to the board's feedback when you see these formulas, especially as they relate to the state. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Amash, and thanks, Dr. Braybrand. We are scheduled to finish in just a few minutes, so I'm going to go ahead and close this out because we won't have time to respond to another question. And I know, Ms. McLaughlin, you've asked a few. So again, I look forward to us connecting with the budget staff additionally after this. So, so great. So we'll be back here in just one week talking about budget again. I'm really excited about it. And for right now, we are going to take a break for lunch from now until 1:30, at which time Dr. Anderson, I believe, will reconvene us. Is that right, Dr. Anderson? Maybe and Ms. Tolan?
I, it's fine for me to do, but Ms. Marin, I'm sorry, Ms. Tolan, if you have a fight on doing that, that is my preference.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. Mr. Frisch and I are prepared to enter that meeting.
Great. Okay, great. So, so we will take a pause here, recess for a bit, and come back at 1:30 with Ms. Tolan or Mr. Frisch bringing us back. Thank you. Thank you again, the budget team.
Thank you.